Good evening and welcome to the Pasco City Council's workshop meeting. The city thanks you for attending and being part of our city government. Agendas will be available at the end of the staff table and detailed agenda package is available on the city of Pasco's website, which is www.pasco/qua.gov. City council meetings are televised live on spectrum cable, channel 191 in Pasco and Richland and are streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. If you have mobile devices with you tonight, we ask that you turn them off or mute them so that the workshop is not interrupted. And with that, we'd like to, with that out of the way, we'd like to start with a roll call, please.
Alvarado.
Present.
Brajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Mil.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
And Serrano.
Yep. Alright, thank you, and we'll all rise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, next, on the agendas. Next on the agenda, we have verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they want to report from this last week? Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting. Couple of updates there to let the city know. The way that they define urban large at the state level, it's kind of a, BFC gets to decide that in a sense, so we sent a letter to the state essentially saying we wanted to expand what would be defined as urban large, so that other smaller municipalities in our region may be able to be eligible for funding that would describe them as urban large part or larger regions. Kind of a pretty commonly done thing, but I just wanted to let the council know if you have any questions about that, can let you know offline.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney.
Yes, on Wednesday, I did attend the DPDA meeting, which gave a report that was re-elected as the president. And we had some good conversations about Cinco de Mayo and how they're planning on staying in their budget. And so it was good conversations. We talked about a lot of different things, from homelessness to clean up the downtown and so looking forward to it. So it was a good meeting.
Perfect, thank you. And I would like to report that I attended a Tri-Cities National Park Committee meeting and it was very interesting. I was elected as the vice president of the committee. I should have been president, as the mayors are each taking turns, but West Richland Mayor was nice enough to take it over since I was really new to this business. But anyway, we discussed, one of the things we discussed was how they want to expand the boundaries of those national park areas out of Hanford. And there's a big, it's a pretty intense process to do that. And the other thing they were trying to do is to create a committee to help make sure they have some donors that can fund to paint some trains that are out there at the B reactor. And they're trying to get the funding and the mechanism put in place so that we can get those donations and get those painted. So we're working on that and moving forward with those types of issues on that park committee. Okay, anybody else? If nobody else has something, we'll move on to 4B, or 4A, excuse me, Ryman Industrial Center in Mr. Radke. Mr. Uofa, or is that, never mind, hold on for a second. Mr. Rick White.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to introduce Randy Hayden, Executive Director for the Port of Pasco. He has a very brief presentation on strategic purchase supports accomplished. And he'll like to inform council of the opportunities and benefits that is expected to bring.
Welcome.
Thank you. Very excited to be here and thank you for giving me a few minutes today to talk with you about the Ryman Industrial Center. This has been a many-year goal of the Port of Pasco to buy a new piece of industrial property within the city UGA or close to the city UGA so that we can continue the great development that we've had with the Pasco Processing Center. So I'm here today and thank you to Dave and Rick for making this slot available today. So, as you know, the Pasco Processing Center, which is shown on this map, has just been a great partnership with the city, the port, the PUD. And we all had a piece in bringing in a lot of companies into the city of Pasco. And we have sold the last piece out there, so we are ready to, just get ready with our new industrial park. So we have bought the 300 acres that you see there as a Ryman Industrial Center. And a key piece of that is just where it's located next to the BNSF rail on the west side of it and then Highway 395 on the east side of it. And it's really, it's tough to find property like that. You'd think that industrial land in Pasco is not that tough, but to find a good piece of property of a good size with those kind of components is really tougher than you think. So what I'd like to do today is just introduce the Ryman Industrial Center to you. As I said, it's a mile north of the Pasco Processing Center, excellent access to Highway 395 and the rail network there. There's also natural gas on site, electrical transmission is already there. And these are all things that we take for granted, but they're very costly if you don't have those things close by to your industrial park. So our vision is to replicate the success of the Pasco Processing Center and create a second heavy industrial development. Food processors would be our primary target, but we're not limiting ourselves to that. If there's other sorts of heavy industry that makes sense for that property, we would certainly go after those as well. But as you know, with the Pasco Processing Center, all the companies that are up on the screen there located there because the city got out in front and put in the process water reuse facility, we developed the land, the roads, the infrastructure in the site. The PUD put in the power and it's a story we all like to tell very often on just the success of how our communities have worked together to draw those companies in. And they really, they would not be there if we hadn't partnered to put together the Pasco Processing Center. So like I said, we've got a new shot now with the new Ryman Industrial Center to continue that great vision for Pasco. When it is fully complete, and we estimate about a 20-year build-out time, that will inject more than $1.5 million in additional property taxes for our schools, our local governments, and create more than 1,000 new jobs for our region. And I know you, and we also see it as one of our primary roles is to provide the tax base that's going to support the people that live in Pasco. And we were kind of behind the curve on that with our commercial and industrial in Pasco. So we really want to and see that as part of our mission to bring in that tax base on the commercial and heavy industrial side. So where we are right now is we've just hired JUB engineers to do the master planning on the Ryman Industrial Center. So they'll be talking with a lot of folks in the community, agencies, on how we can make that the most that it can be. So partnership opportunities, again, the Pasco Processing Center really works because we partnered together. And so as we start looking at what we can do to make this a reality and turn that piece of ground into something that's going to attract the companies, I think we both share that shared vision for economic development. It's not always the case that ports and cities and counties have that shared vision, but I know here in Franklin County and Pasco, we do have that vision for economic development. So that's a good base to start from. We think there's also opportunity to be making some joint funding requests at the state and federal level. We're going to need infrastructure to get up to the property. You are already doing a great job in expanding the process water reuse facility. I think you've got a lot of components there that we need to take care of our existing customers here in Pasco. And eventually, we hope that there will be capacity in that water reuse facility for new companies as well. But I think together, we can make a better pitch for those funding dollars that are available out there. There's also going to be some legislative tools that we think can help us pay for these things in the city. And the port have already been back in Olympia this year, looking at things like tax increment financing that really you're taking the increment in property taxes by this development and using those incremental taxes to help pay for the infrastructure. So we want to support those sorts of tools that help the locals help themselves. Infrastructure development, that's just a lot that needs to be done up there. The way it worked with the Pasco Processing Center is the city really took the lead in extending infrastructure to the site and the port took the lead on getting the infrastructure through the site itself. So we'll see what kind of partnership we can have with that as the city begins their planning. And again, that support for the water reuse facility. If I could go back, I'm not sure if I know how to do that. That's going to take too long. I did want to mention the urban growth area expansion. They can do it here. There we go. What's shown on the orange lines there is the solid line is the current existing UGA for the city. And the dash line is what's proposed in the draft UGA that's being considered by the Planning Commission. About, if that goes through about half of the new city's UGA, or the Ryman Industrial Center will be in the city's new UGA. And we think that's a good start. Obviously, we would like the whole thing to be in the UGA eventually, but because it does take a long time to develop these types of sites, we think that by the time we get ready to develop the north half of the Ryman Industrial Center, there will be another opportunity at that time to extend the UGA up to capture that piece of it. So with that, I think that's all I wanted to say. Again, thanks to staff for working with us so much on this project and we hope that there's lots of good things to come working together.
Great. Any comments? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Hayden, for the presentation here. You know, I really think that this is going to be one of those next big things that we really need. And I recall when we went through the Somos-Pasco Greater, I can't remember the, Greater Pasco Area Strategic Visioning.
I think that was it, yeah.
Something like that. That one of the things that that was really targeted in that was not just currently the sort of processing we have, but the next step of value add, as well as targeting some of these more of the specialty manufacturers and sort of those support type companies. Is there a plan specifically to help draw some of those in? Is that something that we're going to get in the motion later? Is that, or is that starting now? I know those things all just take so long to get everything put together.
Yeah, I would say that we're not really doing anything specifically focused on that next value, value-added component. One thing we did in the Pasco Processing Center, which I for many years thought was a huge mistake, is we carved off a corner of that and reserved it for a little bit smaller lots for the value add. But boy, towards the end of the development now, we're selling those smaller lots. And I think it just lags behind getting the larger companies in there because then, once you have larger companies and the smaller companies, obviously you want to move in to support them. The greatest example is that is Volm Manufacturing that makes some of the packaging equipment that's used by the large food processors. And they built, I believe it was a 50,000 square foot manufacturing facility there at Pasco Processing Center. So because it has been successful, we will definitely be reserving some land at Ryman for those smaller manufacturing companies to support the large food processors. But again, we're targeting food processors, but we're leaving ourselves open for whatever sort of manufacturing we can attract.
Great. I just, that was an excellent exercise that involved a lot of input. And I think the outcomes of it are, you know, just take forever to get implemented, but I see this as being a wonderful project to help support that. Mr. White, I did have a quick question for you. Understanding that we are pretty far down the road in the comp plan, is that something that can be adjusted at this point in time?
No, it can't be. The ship had sailed on this quite a while ago and we've discussed this with the port. But certainly, the delay in our comp plan means we're going to do another cyclical amendment, very much shorter than we originally anticipated. So in another six years, we'll be kind of where we are right now, able to process another UGA adjustment.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood the process. Thank you, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, I have three things I just want to make comment on. First of all, calling it the Ryman, the Ryman Industrial Center is a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
To honor him and what he's done and just, you know, what he's brought to the table, I just want to say kudos for.
Yep, thank you. I know you knew him well.
The Ryman Industrial Center is pretty special. Second of all, I'd like to just comment on the visionaries that created this water reuse facility. Just to think about all those things that are happening, it wouldn't have happened if these guys wouldn't have thought ahead. And it really puts the, it really challenges me and I think it would challenge all of us to kind of think ahead and see, you know, what we can do for our community that's going to be long-lasting and so productive, such as what was happening here for that. And third of all, looking forward to working with the port to ensure that, you know, we get the utilities you need and just working together to make it all happen so that we can bring in those tax dollars for our schools and for our community members. Just want to thank you guys for all that work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright. If there's nothing else, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it very much. Alright, next, 4B, issuance of 2020 revenue bond and refunding of previous bonds. Mr. Sigdell.
Evening Mayor and Council. This is a good segue from our last conversation. Most of what is in front of you today is an introduction to a new bond issue that we've talked about during the budgeting process as well. And this is approximately $16 million in new debt, which all of it would be used for capital projects related to the process water reuse facility. And the debt service for those bonds would be paid out by our users of the facility, which is about four food processors. Additionally, the city has an opportunity to refund existing bonds, which is essentially refinance them. And our 2009 and 2010 water sewer bonds are eligible for refinancing. There's roughly about $9.1 million in debt left for those two bonds. And what we do when there's an opportunity to refinance is just look at whether it is economically a good choice. And what we've found is that, of course, interest rates will change between now to when we actually issue the bonds, but the current estimates tell us that we will save about $1.2 million over the life of these two bonds by refinancing at this point. So we're recommending that we move ahead and refinance them. The reason for that is essentially interest rate. We issued these two bonds at, in average, about 4.5% interest and we're hoping to get somewhere at 3.5. Of course, the 3.5 numbers could change. We still have to go through the whole process. And you'll see that process in the schedule that was attached to the agenda. So these are the four projects that would add up to the $16 million. A caveat that Columbia East Force Main Lift Station is not $1.9 million in its total project cost. This is just the amount that the bond would be paying for. And then the Foster Wells Force Main Irrigation Pump Station and design for the primary treatment improvements. If you have any questions on the projects, I will look to Mr. Worley to answer them in further details. So if you approve and you're okay with moving forward with this, we have done few preliminary things with our bond council and we're looking to come back to you on March 16th with a bond ordinance. And on April 6th, you would essentially delegate the city manager for further execution of the ordinance within certain parameters. And looking at April 28th for bond sale and then May 12th as closing.
Alright, any comments? I have one. I just first want to say I'm all for the $1.2 million savings for consolidating. And the other thing, I just want to correct me if I'm wrong, but the users will pay basically for the bond for the reuse facility.
That is correct.
And in turn, they also pay property tax that helps our community.
That is correct.
That's a wonderful thing. So I just wanted to make sure we communicated that. That's really all I had. Looking for Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sigdell, I echo absolutely everything Mr. Martinez has said there. But actually, I have, actually, I think my questions are actually going to be for Mr. Worley. So I see the deer in the headlights, so that means I'm doing a good thing. This is a fairly substantial amount of additional improvements. So I said, what, 16, just over $16 million? But my recollection is that that's a fairly small, that's not all of what we have coming up in the process water reuse facility over the next couple of years. About how much of this, of the needed improvements are covered by this bond here?
If we could go back to the list that was up there. The projects, I think the first three are fully covered with this and the other funding that we have for those projects. And then the primary treatment improvements, that amount there is not going to cover the construction cost. We are still working on developing what kind of processes we want to use at the reuse facility for the pretreatment program. And so that number will be based on whatever decision we decide to go with in terms of process.
So that number covers the design and the design will tell us what we're, where we actually go with that.
Correct.
But we're in the order of this is maybe half, this is a third, this is 95%.
Depends on the option we choose.
Alright, alright, I won't hold you to that, to some specific number. Related to this, we'd approved previously a removal of the solids.
Yes.
And I was very curious how it was going. Obviously, we had a very memorable experience with community members supplying us their feedback on that. And I know it was supposed to have started already, so I was curious of what, where the status was.
Yes, it has started. It has gone well. The contractor who is removing the solids from the pond has gotten through most of the wetter stuff. If you recall, I commented during all of that, that when they initially get in there, they're going to, there's a lot of more water in that sediment and so they can get it out easier. They've passed that level now. And so now they're bringing in different pumps, like a dredge-type pump, that will now get some of the drier stuff out and be able to pump that into a truck and haul that away. But I would say we're probably about 30, 40% complete with it by now. A little slower than we thought because there's other construction work going on at the reuse facility at the same time. So all the contractors are having to work with each other on access to the site.
Right, and related to that was the, we know we're moving that in part because of the odor issue. And we were concerned that as we were moving, that that was going to stir up a significant amount of odors. Are we seeing that or is it cold enough and that we're just not disturbing the neighbors more than they are typically disturbed this time of year?
Let me put it this way. I have not smelled it, but we also have not received many complaint. Actually, I haven't received any complaints from the operation. So I don't want to say there isn't, because I haven't personally experienced it, but nothing from any of the neighbors as far as the operation itself being problematic.
Great, thank you so much for that sense update.
I appreciate those questions because I had the very same questions. Yeah, I don't care to have another mason jar come up here of that sort of stuff. No, well, thank you for that. I hope they can continue doing the good work there and working with the neighbors up there and getting that accomplished. Okay, if there's no other comments for that, we'll move right along. Thank you, Mr. Worley. We'll move right along to public records policy update. Mr. Radke, now it's your turn. Am I wrong again? Did I skip one? Okay, there's the public record, public records update? The East River View, Mayor. Public records policy update.
I see exactly what Mr. Martinez is saying.
The East River View.
Did, no, no, you got, excuse me, there was an update.
Let's go get started with C and then we can come back to the East River View discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening, Zach Rakai, ACS Director. The item brought before you this evening is an update to the city's public records policy. Pull up my notes here. Public records, both the keeping of and provision to the community is a primary responsibility of the local government. All personnel within the city have a responsibility to work in a transparent nature and we are all stewards of public records. The main department and public face of public records management is the city clerk department. The last update to the city of Pasco's public records policy was in March 2013 and that was conducted through resolution number 3460. There have been continuous revisions to the Washington State Public Records Act since 2013, when the last update to the city records policy was done. And we need to update the policy to reflect those updates to the state public records act. The updated public records policy is an exhibit to your written staff report and within the proposed resolution, staff is recommending that it be moved to and established as an administrative order through the city of Pasco. By moving the policy to an administrative order, it will allow for staff to easily and efficiently maintain and update the policy on an ongoing basis as state laws and best practices change related to the city records, including public records requests, records retention, and records disposition. Some notable updates within the public records policy include the addition of law enforcement body worn camera records, the descriptions, fees and associated with those records, waivers of fees, and other applicable items related to body worn cameras per the RCWs. The addition of charging fees for copies of electronic records is included in this new policy update. We have updated and added public records retention language, which more closely follows the Washington State archivist's retention schedules. And we've also have included language regarding duplicate requests, notices to third parties, no duty to create records, and no duty to supplement responses that have been closed. And the policy will also be linked to the code reviewers website, or excuse me, the code revisers website, which provides the most up-to-date list of records that are exempt from public disclosure. Lastly, the new public records policy will continue to be accessible to the public on the city's website and at the city's clerk's office as required by law. So we do have a city clerk Barum and city attorney Ferguson have worked hard on these revisions and updates. And myself and city clerk and the city attorney will be available to answer any questions of council at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Any questions on the public records policy updates? Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. I really don't have any questions, just a comment. I appreciate the effort that goes into this. I deal with this to a degree at work and I can only imagine how fun this was putting together. So I appreciate the thought that went into this and, you know, just reading through it, it really helps. And I appreciate the foresight of using this as an administrative order in the sense that staff can continually revise it. Because I mean, these cases are coming out sometimes on a monthly, almost weekly basis. And then, you know, legislatively, things change. So again, I appreciate the work that's gone into this. It's something that can be a true burden to an agency and hopefully we're alleviating some of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate a sentiment from Serrano. Finished a chapter on this very subject for school recently, so learning lots. But I had a question, a specific question about when folks come in and inspect documents. Are they able to photograph these and is there?
I'll answer that. No, they are not able to photograph them. They're just able to inspect them. We'll arrange a time for them to meet and we'll sit with them. If they want to make copies of them, we'll have them earmark them or tape them somehow and then provide them with the copies.
Do we need to provide that language in this?
No, I don't think so because the fee schedule covers the costs if they want to make copies of them.
Like with their own phone camera?
No, we wouldn't have them do it with their own phone camera.
Okay, yeah, if, yeah, that's a, if I were wanting to make those requests, I probably would fight that, like, well, it doesn't say it. So I'm just curious.
That's a good point.
But yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a hard balance between, you know, being an open and transparent government, but also not, you know, creating something that people can abuse and, you know, definitely create a burdening thing for the city. So I think that's a pretty important balance to really work through.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Mr. Zabel.
Just to follow up on that, so, and not to prolong the conversation necessarily, but I think it's worth noting, the reason we wouldn't allow a snapshot of off your phone or other device is the city needs to be able to have a record that we provided you with the record requested. So that's the documentation we have is whether it's electronic or whether it's paper, that we provided that record.
Okay, thank you for that. And due to the discrepancy of the two agendas, I'm going to now move up to the workshop or to the item 4C and that's the East River View Areas Sewer Service and Development Policies. Mr. Worley.
Actually, I'm going to kick this off and then I will transfer it over to Steve. So good evening again, Mayor, Council. And this topic started just here, it started as a conversation about sewer-ing portions of the River View area and the facilities necessary to do so, the cost, the financing options. And we've touched on the topic as a capital improvement project multiple times in the past, the CIP, the sewer comp plan. You'll be doing it again very soon in your land use comp plan. It's mentioned there as well. That will be coming for you in the next several weeks. And we do have key staff and a consultant here this evening to discuss the physical project itself. But before we get into that discussion on pumps and pipes, I think it's probably appropriate that we have a, maybe a higher level discussion. maybe a higher level discussion on, uh, from a policy standpoint, so it's clear to council and the public what's all at stake for the long term future of the city, uh, as it relates to not only these improvements, but the development of the River View area itself, some of the key concepts, uh, city's long range planning goals are at stake. Uh, meeting of statutory requirements, uh, and certainly, uh, not adhering to statutory requirements would leave the city's planning efforts subject to challenge down the road. Uh, equity across the entire city, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, uh, so that no one class of property is supporting another. Uh, growth paying for growth, uh, the concept of maximizing investments in public infrastructure uh, is something to think about, uh, enhancing and, and not forever degrading opportunities for efficiencies, which could happen with, uh, bad land use decisions, and then assuring, uh, urban standards, uh, within the development areas, and particularly within our UGA, so that, um, all taxpayers don't later have to fund, uh, expensive upgrades, like adding sidewalks and street lighting and buying additional right of ways so we can widen streets and, and so forth, so. To hone in on the discussion, uh, River View general, area generally, we're talking about west of three ninety-five and south of one eighty-two to the river. A lot of that area is, uh, sewered, matter of fact, it, it rings the subject area we're gonna talk about, which is, uh, uh, a large portion roughly bounded by Road Forty-eight and Road Eighty, and Argent Road and Court Street, uh, which is commonly referred to as the donut hole. So these, uh, these unincorporated areas are generally not, uh, served with sanitary sewer, simply because it hasn't been extended in there, however, most of the properties, uh, are at least conditionally served with water. Uh, granted, there are a number of vacant parcels that aren't, that aren't served or, uh, underdeveloped. Maybe there's perhaps a water service for a ten acre parcel that might have a farmhouse on it or something, so. Uh, significant portions of the, of the area are undeveloped, uh, or underdeveloped, uh, the sub area is also the, uh, coincidentally, or not so much coincidentally, this geographic center of the city's urban growth area is designated by Franklin County. So clearly the intent, uh, of the long range planning of the city and county has been this area is to urbanize. The proximity to, which makes a lot of sense, because the proximity to multiple corridors, uh, transportation corridors, one eighty-two and Court Street and three ninety-five and sixty-eight, Road sixty-eight and Road one hundred. Uh, I, very much advantageous for urban style development, availability of utilities, water, sewer, power, gas, uh, proximity to commercial areas and schools, basically all the things that make property developable exist, uh, and are available to this area. Development in the area has been sporadic and non-uniform, uh, ranging from half acre lots to, uh, five acre and larger farms. Uh, Franklin County's designation of the sub area as being in the urban growth area and its potential large lot development, uh, the subject of density has often been very controversial. And, uh, I think, uh, one of the things that, that's, that's been a, it's been interesting from an economic development standpoint to watch this, and, uh, supply and demand standpoint, there's been a lot easier land to develop than what's in the, than what's in the, uh, River View area, not so much because of, uh, of, um, lack of amenities, but more so having to aggregate parcels, there's been, it's been easier for developers to, to grab big twenty, forty, sixty, eighty acre parcels out in other parts of the open, urban growth area that have utilities available to them, than to go try to aggregate piece, separate pieces ranging from half an acre to five, ten acres in the, in the, um, donut hole area. Uh, and because of that, there hasn't been a lot of development up there, but we are seeing now, as our urban growth area started to fill up, uh, uh, we're seeing a lot more pressure on that River View sub area, and starting to see some development go in there, which has precipitated the discussion about this project. Um, as our inventory strength shrinks, we're seeing that pressure continue to increase, and, uh, to the point where it's really, developers are starting to look at aggregating parcels and clear out older homes and structures and, uh, off of lots to make way for new subdivisions. Those subdivisions, uh, typically are not extending sewer, uh, because there's an expense associated with that, associated with that, and, uh, uh, they are half acres, half acre lots being developed out there, which are primarily inconsistent with urban level standards of development. So at the center of our UGA planning area, uh, where density is, I, I think most people consider critical, uh, we're, we're underdeveloping the property, and, uh, which is gonna, end result's gonna cause further sprawl, which is counter to, uh, urban growth planning and state statute, uh, state statutes that we have to, we have to abide by. So, uh, from what it will take to achieve the city and county statutory goals under the state law, um, we're, we're not, we're not seeing those patterns being demonstrated out in there. The city's taken recent, uh, measures to update its development standards in enough effort to make sure urban standards are required. We do have some areas in town with half acre developments allowed, uh, that prior to, uh, several months ago, were not required to have urban standards, they could have, they could have, uh, uh, development without curb gutter and sidewalk. Uh, subdivision, uh, out of step with the future of Pasco in terms of density and required improvements is, is difficult to undo, you can't, once it's done, it's, you can't undo it, uh, and there's only one opportunity to get it right. And I guess that's a policy issue, whatever right might, might be from a policy standpoint. So the council's established, uh, now has established standards for development relating to, um, density and, uh, mitigation of impacts and development standards, and these standards are also, uh, these standards are so that Pasco of tomorrow matches the county and commission, or county and community's vision for Pasco. Um, and in such, in that kind of a discussion, political boundaries that today really aren't a driver of that vision. And we really need to be thinking about, even though it's not in the city currently, it is surrounded by the city, and clearly, uh, it's part of the UGA. Uh, the expectations by both the city and county are that it eventually will be in the city, and folks living in that area, because they're in the UGA, uh, know that they're eventually gonna be a part of the city. So the inefficient land use patterns that we're seeing out there, and, and I think the thing we need to guard against, and why we're talking about sewer tonight, is, um, when we have underdeveloped land or, or loosely regulated, uh, development, it shifts the immediate and long term financial, uh, quality of life burdens and, uh, financial burdens onto current and future city residents, taxpayers, rate payers. Um, similarly, uh, unmitigated impacts to parks and transportation systems and schools, again, uh, look to others to address those impacts. And underdeveloped properties, um, again, result in wider street frontages for lots, which means more miles of water line for one house compared to two houses or multiple houses. Uh, it means, um, fewer folks to be able to pay into helping maintain those things. Uh, less revenue to support police and fire and ambulance service, and again, that's basically shifting those costs to, uh, to other more densely populated, uh, areas of the city. And then finally, and I, I've seen this throughout my career, and I, I know this council has seen this in the past, uh, it's pretty common when people are annexed into a, into a city, the first thing they ask for is where's my streetlights, where's my sidewalks? You know, and that's, you know, I, I wish I could say that wasn't true, and, and I can tell you from experience that telling them, well, they weren't required when you developed, so if you wanted, we'll do an LID is not a very popular answer to give them back, so. Those really put a burden again, uh, you know, as we go to look at putting in, uh, amenities that should have been there in the first place, that's an expensive proposition for everybody in the so, in the city. Uh, most recently, I think, most of members of this council at our listening session two years ago heard from residents out on Cola Road, uh, in the condition they're living with, a thirty-five hundred foot long dead end on a two lane farm road. And they're wondering when it's ever gonna be widened, uh, working their kids, ride their bikes, walk to school, those kind of things. And that's what you inherit if you aren't looking and, um, and assuring that we are, that we're requiring the, what, what needs to be, today what needs to be in place for the future. So minimum lot size for single family development on a septic system, uh, alluded to it earlier, but that's half an acre. Growth Management Hearing Board generally views one quarter acre lots, minimum, as, uh, being with, uh, uh, a desired density for urban area, and for that size of lot, sanitary sewer needs to be extended. And so for these reasons, uh, and more, uh, we've been evaluating how the sewer can be introduced into the area, and also working with county staff in an effort to assure, uh, and meet the common goal of that new development is consistent with long range planning and, uh, for the sub area and the overall UGA. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve, although I will, do have a few more comments when we're concluded with, uh, the actual discussion on the facilities themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, tonight, what we thought we would do is to start off with a presentation about the sewer, the sewer-ing of the River View area, and give you some details about some work that was going on with that. And then after that, we'll come back to some of the policy issues that City Manager Zabel mentioned, and we'll, we'll discuss some of those in light of the technical information that we'll provide you right now. So with that, I would like to turn this over to our CIP manager, Maria Sarah, and she's gonna introduce the topic and the consultant who did the work for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, I'm here to talk about the East River View Basin sewer concept. Um, we, as you remember, we introduced the idea of sewer-ing the River View area with the use of lift stations, because it sits in a lower elevation than, uh, the surrounding ground. Um, and that was in mid two thousand and eighteen, and we were just refining what the sewer comp plan had established in two thousand and fourteen for what the basin would look like, what the limits of the basin would be. Um, we have since then focused on the East River View Basin, and we hire a consultant, RH Two Engineering, uh, who is gonna give the presentation today. They have done some analysis of what the alternatives are to sewer this area, as far as what, what size of basin would we want to, uh, serve. Um, and of course, what are the impacts of that cost as we look at, okay, how can we recover that, uh, funding? Or the cost of these improvements for the users that are connecting to the system? And we explore different mechanisms for that recuperation of cost. With that, I'm gonna introduce, um, Ryan Withers with RH Two Engineering.
Thank you, Maria and others for having me tonight, um, and again, I'm Ryan Withers with RH Two Engineering, and I'm going to just be describing the background information to support the, the technicalities of, of the options that you have to serve this, uh, sub basin, uh, with sewer facilities, provide some of the analysis results, and then I'll turn it back over to city staff for some of the policy related decisions that Mr. Zabel, uh, described. Um, so on your screen here, um, you see in, highlighted in green in the center of the, the city's UGA, the east sub basin of the River View area, and again, that's generally, uh, between Road Forty and Road sixty-eight, um, shown in green, um, some other background about this image, the whitish gray overlay is the existing city limits, and then the black lines represent the existing wastewater collection system, um, within the city right now. Um, and as you can see, there's no existing sewer infrastructure in the River View area, which includes the donut holes and the areas adjacent to, uh, said donut holes. Go to the next slide, so zooming in on this green area, um, which again, we've got Road Forty on the east, on the right hand side, and Road sixty-eight on the, uh, the left, uh, of the, of the image. And you can see that portions of this area are currently within the city limits, the, sort of the center band, if you will, it kind of meanders is within the city limits with the whitish gray, uh, overlay. And then the westerly and easterly sides of this basin are within unincorporated Franklin County. Um, so the short term need for sewer in this area was to service, uh, park restrooms and a, a future fire station, which the fire station has since been relocated, but the park restrooms still have the need to receive sewer service. And as this immediate need to provide sewer service, um, was being evaluated, consideration was being given to the larger vicinity, this larger basin, um, that as, uh, Maria identified, was recommended be considered as part of the twenty, the city's twenty fourteen, uh, sewer comprehensive plan. And so some of these possible needs for sewer service within this basin would include possible annexation of the donut hole, development within this area, or failed septic systems within this area. Um, and again, the real benefit of considering a larger area, um, ensures that there's a plan for future service for everyone, such that there's not a small number of improvements incrementally constructed that don't have the larger basin in mind, um, that are, uh, sort of, uh, just not optimally designed for the entire basin or for everybody. Um, in terms of recent development in this basin, um, even though there isn't sewer service in this green area, there has been some development occurring here, mostly in the unincorporated Franklin County, County portions of the green area or the sub basin. Um, so this figure shows new subdivisions in yellow and new buildings in red that have been constructed in the last six years. And you can see that's not an insignificant amount of development that's been occurring even without sewer service in this area. So our evaluation included reviewing three alternatives for service to this sub basin, um, to determine what infrastructure and what cost triggers would occur as this area became larger and larger. So starting with the smallest basin, the smallest alternative was alternative one, and that considers providing service to this future park restrooms, and then the parcels immediately adjacent to the park, so about within a thousand foot radius or so of the, the proposed park. And the, the proposed lift station to serve the park is proposed to be located approximately at the intersection of, uh, Road fifty-two and Pearl Street. And that's sort of at the low point, or one of the low points, um, of this entire basin. Um, so any sewer infrastructure within alternative one would meet really just the needs of the city park and these adjacent, uh, parcels. So this alternative would really only be recommended if the, if the near term need to serve these customers is really the only need, um, that the city envisions for service in the, in the future, and that there's no desire to plan for or design for future basin service, um, in this area. Um, and then facilities installed under this alternative to serve this park and these adjacent parcels would not be reusable if ultimately the service area needed to be expanded much further than these adjacent parcels. So the lift station, the gravity main, the force main extending from the, the lift station would be sized to meet really just these really small needs, and that if in the future, a larger portion of this basin were to develop, all that lift station, that force main would need to be replaced with larger infrastructure. Um, alternative one, it's sort of the top of the table here on the far right, you can see could serve up to two hundred and twenty-seven equivalent residential units, ERUs. Two hundred and twenty-seven ERUs for alternative one. Alternative two is an intermediate size, and I should note, the next couple of slides show, um, areas of what each of these alternatives serve. Alternative two is an intermediate sized basin, providing service from Road Forty to Road Sixty, and proposed infrastructure in this alternative was considered to be able to visit, to be deep enough to physically serve each parcel within the entire basin, all the way to the west of, of Road sixty-eight. But the assumption in terms of sizing the lift station, sizing the force main, sizing the gravity main, assumed that not every parcel would develop within the basin at its full, uh, potential. So there, there would be, uh, development throughout the entire basin, all parcels could be served, but not up to their full development potential. Um, so this results in larger infrastructure than alternative one, but smaller infrastructure than alternative three, which I'll talk on here in a moment, uh, resulting in eight hundred and one, in the sort of middle of the table, right hand side, eight hundred and one total ERUs being able to be served uh, within alternative two. And then alternative three is the entire basin, serving all of the parcels within this green area that we've been highlighting, um, and serving up to one thousand four hundred and eighty-one ERUs. So, zooming in on each of these areas, alternative one, again, is the smallest basin, we're zoomed in, um, pretty tight here, um, just including the park and parcels immediately adjacent to the park. You'll note that on this, uh, image, that some of the parcels are shown with orange outline and some are shown with pink cross hatching. So the orange parcels are parcels that are generally less than one acre or have very specific land uses, such as the park, um, or have very recently installed structures on them, so we assumed that those parcels would contribute to the basin, but that they would not develop any further. And then the parcels with the pink cross hatching are parcels that in general are one acre or larger, and that they would develop or redevelop, um, as part of the, the entire study, and that they would develop at a rate of three ERUs per acre, which is consistent with the RS twelve suburban zoning. And I'm aware that higher densities could occur, multifamily, um, R one, so on and so forth, but for the purposes of this study, we select- but for the purposes of this study, we selected the three ERUs per, per acre to sort of try and represent the varying possibilities of R1, RS12, and RS20 with a reasonable average of, of three ERUs per acre. So that's some of the, the boundary conditions that went into this study. And again, so alternative one, we have the park, the parcels adjacent to the lift station and the park, serving up to 227 ERUs. Alternative two, this is the intermediate basin, Road 40 on the east, Road 60 on the west, capable of serving 801 ERUs with the same color coding with the orange outline versus the pink crosshatching outline. And then alternative three, the entire basin, again, with the, the different orange and pink crosshatching, extending all the way to Road 68, including the parcels on the west side of Road 68, capable of serving 1,481 ERUs. So in terms of cost considerations for each of these alternatives, based on the cost to construct the lift station, the downstream force main, the piping, all the earthwork, roadway restoration costs, we calculated the approximate construction cost for each of these different alternatives, and then extrapolated that further to identify the approximate cost per ERU served within each of these alternatives. So I'll really draw your attention to the bottom table, which summarizes each of the three alternatives and their estimated construction cost, the number of ERUs served within each alternative, and then the cost per ERU served. And so you can see, alternative one, there's a cost per ERU served about $4,900. Alternative two is about half that, $2,500 per ERU served. And alternative three, even, even a less cost of $1,400 per ERU served. So some of these costs, or so, just in summary, as you can see, as the basin increases, the cost to serve each individual ERU decreases somewhat significantly with the cost per ERU in alternative three, about a third of the cost with an alternative one.
Good question. So my question would be, well, it's obvious that the more, the alternative three would be appropriate. My question would be, if, if we would like to choose alternative three, could we, would it be that cost from the beginning? Or would it be like prorated as, as there's growth there? You, you, am I explaining myself?
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is that, you know, if, if this was to actually occur, and you know, the, the, the people who initially would be using it or paying for it, do they get to pay the $1,400 on average in the beginning so that everybody eventually will be paying that? Or is it going to be like a, an escalated cost to pay for infrastructure?
Sure. Great question. The majority of the cost would be upfront. Most of the cost is within installing the lift station, the force main south of the lift station, and then subsequently the gravity main downstream of said force main. And then all of the additional costs to serve future customers within this basin would be based on an as-needed basis as, as the growth occurs. And what we've done is assumed that, that the developers would construct or pay for the costs of eight-inch diameter sewer main within the sub-basin to ultimately connect to this proposed lift station. And then any upsizing cost, depending on how large this basin is to be, would be borne by the city and then ultimately recovered through either the LID or the latecomers agreement mechanism. So the majority of the cost would be upfront for the infrastructure, essentially to get the wastewater out of the basin, and then the cost to collect the wastewater within the basin would be the subsequent cost, the majority of which would be paid for by the developers as the development occurs.
Okay.
Can I tack on?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Since we're on the slide, if I understood correctly, alternative one is limited. It's, it's, that's what you get, you can't upsize it, that's that, right?
Correct.
Can alternative two have increase in size? I mean, I see in addition to the top two pumps for phase one being, you know, an extra 225 gallons per minute, there's a third 500 gallon per minute on the alternative three. So is that like a design option where if, if we, you know, ultimately determined alternative two made more sense, we could add a pump? Or, or what's that look like?
That's exactly correct, the latter. The, the option to have an additional bay or additional space, if you will, in one way or another, to add an additional pump could, could absolutely be in play.
That said, I mean, we're talking about obviously two different sizes on the phase one pumps, and then the adding a 500-gallon pump, what do those pumps cost? Or do you know what you estimated the cost of one of those?
They're pretty negligible.
Okay. I, I mean, just thinking a $110,000 difference doesn't seem like significant amount depending on what the cost of the equipment is.
I, I agree with that statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So then, we've hinted at this, but recouping these costs, there, there's two primary investment recuperation mechanisms, and these are codified in RCWs and Pasco Municipal Code. The first one, ULIDs are utility local, utility local improvement districts. So this mechanism requires the majority approval of the landowners within whichever-sized basin is selected to move forward with. And then it subsequently assesses each property based on the frontage footage or the area or a combination thereof, such that ultimately the final costs associated with the project, the construction cost, the design, services during construction, all of the oversight of the project is assessed to the property owners, and those property owners can pay either upfront or over time, but they are, are bound to pay one way or another, be it today or over a course of, of a number of years. So each of these properties would be assessed their fair share of the project. And I will just note that the ULID process is codified in chapter 14.05 of the Pasco Municipal Code. And then another recuperation mechanism is utility latecomer agreements. So this is calculated actually very similarly to ULIDs on a lot-by-lot or parcel-by-parcel basis, but the payment and the recuperation of these costs is very different from ULIDs. So the city would be responsible for all of the upfront costs of the project, and then latecomer fees would be assessed to each property when that property develops or connects to the system. And so there would be no guarantee, unlike the ULID, but there would be no guarantee with the latecomer agreements that all costs that the city fronts would be ultimately reimbursed. For example, if a parcel never develops or connects to the system, and then further, typically there are caps of about 20 years is, is a typical, uh, just period from the end of the project completion to 20 years beyond that, from which anything that happens beyond 20 years in terms of development or connection to the system cannot be recuperated by the city. So compared to ULIDs, latecomer agreements are much easier to facilitate. You don't need a majority approval upfront, but there's risk associated with recovering those costs down the line. And just to point out that this is identified and codified in chapter 14.25 of the Pasco Municipal Code. So that summarizes the, sort of the technical background of the sewer infrastructure. I believe I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Worley or Mr. Zabel.
Mr. Worley. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that. So moving into the next area of the presentation, now we're going to start moving from the technical into some of the policy issues that City Manager Zabel discussed previously. I don't know if we can go to the next slide.
Actually, I, I need a microphone here. John, are we down here? So I, I kind of need to come over to this area.
He has to turn it on over there first.
I think he's got you now.
We good, John?
Oh, got you now.
Okay. So I kind of need to come out here to show you this because you can kind of see these crossed hatch pieces are all undeveloped. And what we're doing is, this proposal, and this is the one that is the least expensive, at least per ERU, you're snaking a sewer line through a bunch of developments that are already at half, and this is the problem with going into an area that it'd be nice if it was a clean slate, no offense to the folks that live there, but it would be great if it was a clean slate because then everybody would expect, everybody would understand what they're going to expect. So we have a lot of half-acre homes out here with folks living in them, and we're talking about putting probably quarter-acre, more suburban-level homes next to them. And so council, as we go forward with this, is going to have a lot of pressure on them about increasing the density in my neighborhood. This is different than where I live right now, and you're changing the character of my neighborhood. So I think that's something that you really need to keep in mind when we're talking about this, and I'm not trying to talk you out of it. And, and you can kind of see what'll happen is, you know, this will be four lots per acre, this stuff will be four lots per acre. These are probably an acre, these long pieces right here. And I'm not sure, this is not a satellite, so I don't know which has houses on it, which do not right now, but I can pretty much guarantee all these have or will have houses on them. So I, I, I need, I, I just feel like we need to kind of point that out while we're having the discussion. Certainly there's some great opportunities for development up in here. This is, this actually could be redeveloped at some point in time, there's a big center in it, but you can kind of see it's ringed by some pretty nice estate-style houses out there, too. May not be a popular thing for them, may never develop because if they can keep all this undeveloped, that makes for a nice pastoral, so it's, you know, because we decide that, or because the city decides this is going to be developed to an urban level, and we're going to invest in sewer out here, doesn't necessarily mean people are going to be willing to sell their property and subdivide it. So it's, it's kind of a, what, what you're doing is kind of threading this needle about investment and public sentiment that you're going to get back, and the reality of looking at this piece right here, that stuff in the middle probably will never develop. Yeah. So it's, it kind of comes down to that. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Steve, sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Can we go to that last slide? There we go. So coming back a little bit to how we got into this situation, I want to take you back a little bit. There is typically in situations like this, where you have an urban growth area, something called a joint development agreement, and it's usually between a city and a county, and it talks about how are we going to agree to allow development to occur in areas that the city is typically slated for incorporating it sometime in the future, so that by the time they incorporate, the improvements are made in a manner that is more conducive to city services. And there was an effort years past dating back to May of 1996, where there was a Joint Development Standards Committee formed through a resolution passed by both the city and the council. And in August of 1998, they passed a resolution with an intent to adopt a joint city-county zoning regulation, and that resolution urged the county to adopt that zoning regulation. And it has not happened since that time, and there was another effort in 2009 where they had another workshop and they tried to get it passed. And here we sit today in 2020 and still no joint development agreement. So I don't have a clicker. So some of the, the policy issues that we have been, that Pasco has been trying to address relative to this issue is establishing what the development standards are going to be for developments to connect to city sewer and water. And so up here right now, what we're showing is the standards for City of Pasco to connect to the city water system is that any of the new developments must meet the city standards with curb gutters, sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera. Or they must at least meet the current, the county urban standard for roads. I think you may recall, City Manager Zabel mentioned either last week or the week before about how in some of these areas, the county has provided an option for developers as to whether they wanted to develop their properties to urban standards, but they did not require it. And we are saying that we would like, we would require those standards to be met if they're going to hook up to sewer and water. That sewer and water extension would be done at the time the land is subdivided, either in a plat or a short plat. There are exceptions for the rules that we have in place right now, and those exceptions are for like single-family home connections. If you've got a lot out there and you want to build a single-family home, we'll certainly give you a connection to it. But if you're going to subdivide that property and develop it and make some money, then we want you to develop it in a manner that's going to increase the density so that we can accommodate the future growth being projected for Pasco. And then we do have the ability, as was said earlier, that latecomer agreements are available to developers to help offset that cost. Go to the next one. And so some of the items that we think need to be discussed to help determine whether or not we move forward with the sewer-ing of these areas, is whether or not we ought to establish a minimum density requirement for connection to sewer and, and water systems. If we did, if the council decided to go that route, what it would do is it would allow for more efficient use of that land and make better use of it and spread that cost of the public infrastructure to more people, as was presented by Ryan earlier. It lessens the sprawl in other parts of the community by being able to concentrate the development within the center of the city. And as mentioned, it just spreads that cost and provides a lesser cost for everybody. And so with that, I think that's the end of the presentation, and so we are here to answer questions, continue the dialogue, and kind of get a feel for where council is relative to this issue.
Yeah, I, yeah, finishing up, I mean, it really kind of comes down to, given the situation out there and what could happen if we continue to allow things to develop with water only, and what that does to your UGA. You, you, if you're going to put an investment like lift stations out there, you pretty much have to draw a pretty hard line to say, if you want water, you're going to have to get sewer. Because if you don't, then you're just going to perpetuate what's happened, and we'll have very few people actually connected to those lift stations that are built. It'll just be an economic driver, not anything else, and there's only so far that's going to go. It'll go right around the core, or you pretty much conclude that you're not going to invest in sewer out there and let it all develop at half-acre density. I mean, that, that's really what, or, or larger, that's what it comes down to. And then, and then you have a, you have a, a core in the middle of your UGA that is a very low-density core. Couple of problems with that, again, that, that gets to that cost shifting, you know, to everybody else that now has to pay for that, everyone else's life, someone else's lifestyle or preferred lifestyle. And it also really leaves us subject to challenge in how we're, our, our urban growth expansion subject to challenge because it's, it's very easily, easy to say and point out that you're not making efficient use of the land that you have available now, so we're not going to give you more. And I, I think I'd ask Rick to run a quick calculation as to if we were to give up the area and just say, no more density other than the half acre, even if we got away with that without it being challenged today, we would have to add about, I think, 225 acres to our current, um, urban growth area request. So we'd have to add 225 acres to the, to the acreage beyond what we're currently requesting. So that, that gives you, I think, the, all the facts, and staff looks forward to your thoughts, questions, direction.
Okay. Mr. Roach?
I guess I'll go first. So I saw in our discussion that there's a suggestion that we could adopt an inter-local agreement or insist that the county develop to UGA standards. And I personally know what I think about that, but I was wanting to ask staff how realistic is even pursuing that option?
Yeah, I, I would say that, you know, the, the county, the county commission, as, as the city council has, you know, faces have changed over time. This, I think those discussions first started in 1998. I, I don't think it would be pointless to go have a discussion, you know, perhaps the committee of the council to meet with someone the commission might delegate to have a discussion about it, along with staff. We, we have been working with staff, and, and county staff certainly understands the county's obligations under the Growth Management Act, and those discussions, I think, have gone pretty well. uh, the county's obligations under the Growth Management Act, and, uh, those discussions, I think, have gone pretty well.
But it would also be reliant upon county planning commission and then county commissioners as well to be on board with that inter-local agreement or development standards, um, to alignment. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. But there, I mean, and there, there is a, a county urban standard that is not too dissimilar from this, at least for road, uh, development. Not too dissimilar from ours. A little bit narrower, pavements, sections, a little bit different, uh, those kinda things. But, uh, problem we're having out there is that's not being implemented.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I can tell we're all eager to tackle the subject. Um, I know this is one that's, that's, that is contentious for a lot of reasons. Um, and certainly, I think this is a, um, a pretty meaty subject that I, I, I frankly hope we don't come to consensus on right now, because there's so much to discuss about this and think about. I would, I would hate for us to rush to some sort of conclusion. But I guess, um, when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at this and the information, I, I do have a couple of questions. The additional area of expansion of the UGA requ- um, required if we, if we do not more densely develop the, um, the donut hole, um, was pretty eye-opening to me. I mean, that was a, that was a pretty large number, over two hundred additional acres. But Mr. Zabel, what really shocked me more was really talking about how, I'll paraphrase what I think, and please, please help me understand if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, um, was that we're saying that this area is being functionally subsidized by more dense development like my side of town. Uh, be, could you, could you help me understand it? Am I, am I getting that right?
Yeah, I think that, that kinda touches on it, 'cause if, if you have a half-acre lot, you have twenty-two acre, or twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty feet of, uh, road frontage. Uh, so, and you're paying taxes on most of your properties undeveloped, whereas you have, in town, you'll have maybe an eighty-foot, eighty-foot road frontage. You're gonna have three lots in that same space. And the, the cumulative, uh, tax burden of those three lots are much larger than a half-acre country lot. So you're paying a lot more for taxes. And once, once those properties annex into the city, there is no longer any road tax, so it is just the general property tax. Uh, right now, the, every, every property out there in the unincorporated area pays a fifty cents per thousand road tax on, on assessed valuation. Yeah. So then, then the same is true, though, of water lines and sewer lines and other, other utilities and, and things that are needed to serve it. It's, uh, you know, you go farther when you're a police officer or sheriff's deputy from house to house than you would in the city. Uh, you know, just, everything is that less efficient in an area that's developed, uh, inefficiently. That, that's the concept of those comments in the agenda report.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I thank you for, for, for expanding on that a bit. I guess I would, I, I would ask if you, is there any way we could be provided more information on what that sort of looks like? I mean, in terms of taxes versus costs, um, for density, is there some sort of rules of thumb? I don't wanna say, in this house right here, how does it compare, but?
Yeah, I, I could, I think we could probably, maybe the, the American Planning Association or someplace like that might be able to help us.
I, yeah, I think we can. Um, it, it will be a rule of thumb at best, but, um, there, there is some, a body of evidence that seems to suggest that as you get to the four or five unit per acre, um, trigger, that seems to be about the break-even point in terms of taxes received for services provided. I'll, I'll try to find something, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, 'cause I, I I think I'm understanding the concept, um, as you're explaining it further, but I, I really feel it's important to understand how that really plays out, um, how big those differences are. Um, I mean, obviously, again, my, my, um, my district is pretty densely populated, um, especially compared to these, and, um, and I, I would, I would hate to hear that we're, we're putting additional burden on, on some folks in, in our community over, um, others that are, I guess, living, uh, um, in a slightly more luxurious style of, of, uh, of housing.
Well, and I, I guess I would say, that, that's when they're annexed, right? So right now, you have developments out there that are using roads and intersections, and that require traffic, it's very expensive to maintain and build traffic signals and, uh, and things like that, that, um, they aren't paying into it at all, except perhaps with some sales tax. But they're not paying, none of their property taxes going towards those services. And we are responding out there for fire and, and ambulance as well. We're not gonna turn our backs on people in need, but those taxes are not coming to the city. Whereas if you are in the city, you are still paying taxes to the county, and sales tax to the county, by the way.
Thank you for expanding on that. It's a pretty complicated situation. I clearly don't have a good handle on all that. So if there's more information if you can provide, that would be, I think, really appreciated. I'd, I'd really personally appreciate that. Um, asking a somewhat more technical question, um, when we're looking at that table of alternatives for, for this particular project, this, um, on our agenda, um, I think I understood that there's a twenty-year, um, window for cost recovery on the latecomer fees. Um, is that state law, municipal code? I, I heard PMC was referenced, but I, I was curious if that's a self-chosen limitation or if that's a, um, more legal?
Yes, excuse me. So, uh, they just extended that, uh, uh, term limit, uh, in two thousand and thirteen. It was limited, uh, I believe to ten and fifteen, and now it's, uh, to fifteen, uh, for, uh, roads and twenty for, uh, utilities. Uh, and then we have subsequently adopted that into our own code.
Uh, thank you. Um, so how long would we expect the full sort of build-out when we're looking at alternatives two and alternatives three? If we go down that funding mechanism, we're talking about a lot of units to develop out there. And though we are developing quickly, I'm, I'm not sure that we're gonna reach full build-out in twenty years. And I, I guess I don't, I don't really understand. I don't have a good concept of how long we'd expect to meet those sort of, uh, peak alternatives that we've discussed.
Well, I, I could give you a, a number of, what do, what do we have? Five hundred and eighty fam, five single-family home? This last year. So, I, was that fourteen hundred units?
Uh, yes, number three.
Yeah, number three's fourteen, so that's, uh, three years' worth. Not, but there'd be, there'd be pressure in development in other places, too, right? And, uh, as I said, one, one of the things we're seeing now is there's a lot of pressure in this area because there is not a lot of developable area within the current UGA. We, we expand the current UGA, the bigger developers, you're gonna see them heading up north and west into the expanded area to build bigger subdivisions. And that's, it may or may not take some of the pressure off this area. I think one of the other things that's holding this, this area back, or has been holding this area back, is the lack of sanitary sewer.
Right. Thank you. Um, I mean, finally, I guess I'd, I, I certainly would note that I've, I've noticed in the, um, paper, a number of our local communities have had their, um, UGAs challenged, um, by environmental groups. They've gone through some legal challenges, where is, is that what you're referring to when you're saying there might be some implications to, and challenges to this? We're talking about potential legal challenges to our comp plan as currently drafted?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll let Rick, uh, touch on that, but I, and also touch on the, the idea that, um, if, if we aren't utilizing lands within our UGA and don't intend to, that, that could complicate things for us, so.
Uh, Mr. Maloney, I think that's, as, as a matter of fact, that's the assumption I'm going on, is that we will be challenged, uh, uh, with the final decision with our, uh, urban boundary in particular, and perhaps both our urban boundary and our comprehensive plan.
Uh, right now, given what we have, or if we had additional changes to it, does this make us more susceptible? I, I guess I'm not sure I understand the implication of your statement.
Well, no, uh, the, no matter what, the original forty-eight-hundred-acre e- expansion area would, uh, you know, we pulled back from, of course, so we could, uh, reassess, uh, several different alternatives and then prepare an environmental analysis through the EIS process for, uh, analyzing those alternatives. Uh, but even though we've kept in very close contact, uh, with a special interest group and involved them, um, with, uh, for example, staying abreast of our code decisions, uh, to densify both the city limits and the, the issues associated with the Riverview area, unincorporated portions at least, um, I still think that the thirty-six-hundred-acre roughly expansion into farmland will provide the, the grounds for an appeal.
All right. Um, thank you. I think that's all I have for now. I look forward to having some additional information to review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Alvarado?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also trying to wrap my head around this. Um, I had a question about, um, we, we had some images with some, uh, subdivisions that were post, uh, two thousand and fourteen. Um, I'm, I'm curious, um, I think the size, uh, perhaps on some of the sizes on those, those, those are definitely limited to septic, right? You have a size of, uh, of a maximum, uh, minimum-sized lots for being able to have a septic, uh, system, things of that nature. Um, but it does seem like there's, you know, quite a few that are popping up, and perhaps with, under county, um, you know, rules. Um, um, so my question to, is that, um, is the, is there a sense that that's kinda, there's more of that coming, more of those plots? I know that they're more complicated, but is that kind of the direction that it would go if, say, we did nothing? Um, we would start to see a lot more of these kind of developments, a lot of these short plats?
Yeah, I, I think based on what we're hearing, Public Works and Community Economic Development Departments is, uh, yeah, there's more and more interest in the, in the Riverview unincorporated area. Uh, because, and there's a lot more pressure on it because of the lack of developable land otherwise.
I'm assuming the short plats are about six, seven, ten, uh, lots at a time, uh, pre- precluding them from, um, the ability to, uh, cover school fees or anything of that, that nature?
Yeah, they're, they're actually, um, I think the, the, uh, anything under nineteen lots
Right.
in the county is exempt from SEPA. Is that correct, Rick?
Yeah.
So that's a, another layer of impact also to our schools?
Yeah, so that, so, you know, schools, the transportation impacts, you know, park impacts, those are, those are being overlooked. And so though, again, those are, the impacts of those then are being funded by others.
Yeah, thank you. That, that, uh, kinda, that's another dimension to it for me. Um, yeah, um, obviously, we don't, it's probably impossible to know the age of the septic, septic systems around this area, but I'm assuming for a, a, a lot of latecomers, it would be, uh, s- probably advantageous as septics come to their end of their life to be able to have that ability to hook up. I, I would imagine as a, as a homeowner, that would be a, a good option, but certainly not one that I would want to pay if I had a brand-new septic system, so. I mean, that, just kinda some of the thoughts I, I had. Definitely, this require a lot more conversation, but just some of my initial thoughts.
Um, Mr. Roach?
So I just had a comment about the, uh, development within the, this Riverview Estates, and from my perspective of planning commission, that when we did see developers come to this area to develop because, you know, a homeowner sold a large parcel of land, and they can make a lot of money off of it. And, you know, rightfully so, they should, and they should be able to do what they want with their property. But then what ended up happening is when those developers came to planning commission trying to make it financially solvent for them to build what they wanna build and make money, um, but trying to do it in a way that, you know, is not, um, huge lots where they, they can't make that back, and then, you know, on top of it, doing septic, which is not, um, you know, what the city wants. So that's just one take, uh, on that. But the other was that, you know, a couple of years ago, I attended a, it was two thousand and eighteen, and I think it was, um, a city, Pa- City of Pasco hosted event where we were doing the urban growth expansion, and we invited the rural area residents to, um, Maya Angelou to come give input onto what parts of the, what parcels of land wanted to be included, which ones wanted to be excluded. And I, um, do recall and remember, and this goes to what you comment, you had, uh, Futurewise was present, and they are watching and they are paying attention to how we expand and, um, how we use our land. So I would say, you know, to echo what Mr. White said, that they, those interest groups probably would appeal. So.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Mr. Sharona?
Thank you. Do we have, I know we've purchased a lot of water rights recently. Um, do we have the water rights for this type of development in addition to the ongoing development? Or are we gonna continually be chasing that ball as we continue to? Obviously, we will continue to chase the ball, but will it be mandated?
That is correct. We will continue to chase that ball for acquiring water rights. And the most recent one that we came to council with, the five-thousand-acre foot, uh, will help certainly do that. So we don't believe, or we don't believe water will be a problem in the immediate future, but we will continue to pursue all the water rights we have available to us.
However, per your, per your code as it exists today, uh, developers are required to either provide water rights when they develop or pay the equivalent so the city can then purchase water rights.
So what do we see happening more commonly? Just paying the assessed value?
Paying, yeah, paying, paying the going rate.
Okay. Second question, uh, and this is probably further down the road, needs more time to explore. Is there any way that, in the event that we move forward with our UGA and just left the donut holes out, is that legally viable?
Uh, as time goes on, probably no. I, I don't think it is. Um, there's a, I think, a short-term gain to be had by that. Um, and if council recalls, uh, the, well, it's been almost exactly two years now. The retreat two years ago, we had an aerial photograph that showed some of the real problems, uh, not just with utilities, but with road extensions and utilities and, and, and things being the way they are. Um, it will probably be a hindrance as opposed to anything that works in our favor as time goes on.
Right. I understand. I'm just, uh, trying to think if we're considering weighing legal risk from interest groups, that might be one legally defensible way that kicks the can down the road and creates more headaches down the future. But at least, um, it might, might be leveraging discussions with our counterparts at the county if they're not open to, uh, understanding our position. Thank you.
Well, I think we've had good discussions, but my comments on this, and this is where it gets really difficult. And, um, and, and these are just suggestions, 'cause obviously, uh, I, I think there's, we, we need to put more thought into this, 'cause it's so complex. When I moved into my, my area of town, there was nothing to the west of me. Up until Road sixty-eight, there was a gas station on Road sixty-eight. But I knew it was gonna be development all around me. When I moved in, there was a beautiful alfalfa field with horses on it, and it was just, you know, really nice. But I knew there was gonna be development there someday, so the expectation was there. And the people in the unincorporate, unincorporated area, many of them had no clue that this was gonna happen in Pasco. Uh, and therefore, for the people who have been there for a long time, you know, um, I wanna be real sensitive to, to their land that they purchased for the reasons they purchased it. And then, um, but for the, for the undeveloped areas, you know, and this is only something that I'm thinking out loud with at this time. But you know, as we, um, as we incorporated some part, annexed some of the donut hole, uh, we had, uh, there, there was, I don't know, a committee, uh, forum of people that came and gave their thoughts. And you know, it's, it's really interesting, because half, now, maybe not half, but there's, there's residents in that area that, you know, know their septic system's going out, and they say, we need it now. You know, they want their, they want a sewer system now, so they don't have to pay for another septic system. Uh, it just depends on where they're at in their situation, which makes it even more difficult. But if we, you know, just a suggestion to maybe create an, an open forum for, uh, people in that area to maybe come to a consensus, or maybe a mediator, mediator-type, um, forum where for those unincorporate or undeveloped areas that we need higher, um, uh, volume of homes, um, you know, with fences around, make little development so that it doesn't hinder them as much and doesn't, uh, affect them as much. Just, just suggestions at this point, but, um, something that we can come to a consensus so that we don't impact the people who were there before all this came about, uh, to affect them as least as possible. So just, just a thought there. Um, yeah, definitely need some more information in how it impacts the rest of the city. We already know that, um, that the residents of Pasco are, are paying their fair portion for, for these services that, that the unincorporated area is taking advantage of. But also to maybe gain a, um, a better relationship with our county commissioners, uh, to be able to work together to get some of these things going that, you know, we really need to make progress on this, uh, that is gonna work for both of us. So that, those would be my comments. So we're looking forward to hearing some more information. Mr. Sharona?
Um, just if I can summarize what I'm thinking correctly, in the worst-case scenario, we build out alternative three, we're taking a two-million-dollar risk, right? And that's, that's, that's the worst-case scenario. If we spend it all and no one ever builds, and even if we incorporated, we've, at a minimum, provided the infrastructure. And even if we incorporated, we've at a minimum provided the infrastructure and no one signs up, right? That's, that's kind of our worst case scenarios, is that correct?
That's, that appears to be the case, yes.
Okay, I, I'm just.
That, that's actually, this is only, remember, this is only the east uh sub basin, there's a west sub basin.
Right.
Well, that has the same story.
So between four and five million, if we build everything, alright, I'm, I'm just trying to see if. What, what we're at risk, I guess, is, is, and it's ultimately that, um and obviously, people are starting to build out there. Continue to build out there, so I don't think we're ever gonna be out the entire pie, just question is how much, so.
Well, I, I think one question to ask is, do you, do you, as, as uh Public Works Director mentioned. If you need a service on an existing lot. We'll give you a water service, but we're not gonna perpetuate the problem by allowing further development out there, I mean, that, that may be where you start and stop this.
Yeah.
You know, that's got its, that's got its challenges too, but at least it doesn't make the situation worse for Pasco residents.
Right.
You know, I, I did wanna make, if I could do one follow up, Mister Mayor, on the water rights question uh that Councilmember Serrano had asked. Uh a lot of the development over the last thirty years has been a transfer of water rights. So it's really just kind of the small, some of the smaller develops we've been seeing over the last several years where there hasn't been water rights associated with the property. Where folks have paid rather than, rather than transfer water rights, uh the, the new. Uh newly requ- I should say, the requested uh uh urban growth area. Uh those new lands up there as they come in and however many are allowed to come in as we go through the process. Those have water rights associated with them, so I think we can anticipate seeing a lot of those water rights transferred to the city.
Alright, and Mister Mayor, if I would add that um we have seen a lot of increase in interest in developers who are looking for sewer. In this area, uh we've got one plat that is soon to be sewered, that's working its way through the process right now off of Route fifty two. And that same developer is looking for parcels in the Riverview area and keeps coming in and asking, when is more sewer going to be extended? I think it's because they see the value in it and, and they do benefit from uh creating lots that are sewered, so.
Okay, well, thank you uh for that discussion, Council, uh not a difficult one, but um looking forward to getting more information and seeing how we can tackle this. Um as we go forward, thank you very much. Uh we have one last item on the agenda, that's the uh PMC amendments based on code publishing recommendations.
I'll take that one, uh so yeah, this is the uh second of uh five, uh five that we know of, we may have more uh coming, so. Um no, it uh, it's uh, this is pretty much limited to the uh park code, um these changes uh really. Um the biggest thing that you probably noticed when you looked through this was that uh we changed a lot of things to class of infractions. One of the uh problems that we found was that uh our infractions uh that were laid out in PMC um. Uh chapter one, or excuse me, title one, um were um had levels and we referred to just infractions. So this is an attempt to really uh make sure that that is in line, so that it's clear what those infraction amounts would be. Now, with that being said, the um thing that I want to uh be clear on is that this was an attempt. By uh your city attorneys uh and uh code publishing to uh try to right-size the fines for. The items that are listed in here, but these are, and, and that's based on their experience with other cities and, and other, other folks, that's just um. Kind of uh our, I guess, uh experience of how, how it's been done other places, but. Uh with that being said, uh that is, this is totally up to uh the council about how they wanna proceed. Uh to give you a little context, cause I know you don't have uh the title one in front of you, uh is uh a uh level four, class four is a twenty five dollar fine. Class three is a fifty dollar fine, class two is a hundred and twenty five dollar fine and class one is two hundred and fifty dollars. So with that being said, skateboarding in a park. Yeah, I think we've got that as a class three, so that's a fifty dollar fine, you know, versus uh, you know, an unauthorized uh uh fire. Which is uh clearly a class one uh kind of thing uh for safety reasons, so we um we put, put those uh levels on there, so. Uh really, um whatever council wants, wants to give us some direction on how they wanna proceed, these were our, our attempt to uh try to make them fit with the current lay of the land.
Okay, any comments? Is this something that uh will be on next week's agenda?
It, if council would like, it's ready to go, so um, yeah, the uh one thing I would probably wanna. Um bring to your attention on uh um is nine one hundred uh uh dot two hundred. Golfing, baseball, swimming, uh that may be a little uh, a little steep for uh golfing in a park. So uh if that's something the council wants to look at, I think it's because the, the danger part of the, that's kind of lumped together in that section with uh some pretty dangerous things. So I'm not sure how we wanna do that, but.
If I may, Mister Mayor. But yeah, that was actually uh that and then two twenty were the two sections that I wanted to address, I thought that. I understand there's concern of, you know, you hit someone with a golf ball or baseball, or I guess if you swim next to. A prohibited area and by a dock or intake structure, you don't want suck someone into the water facilities, that's probably not good. Um that said, class one, based on the escalation of fees seemed high, class two probably is adequate. You said one twenty five, is that correct? Um I, I think that's fine, and I, I'm hedging on two twenty because, you know, littering. Especially when you look at those right next to one another, you have two fifty to hit a golf ball, then a hundred and twenty five to litter. And I think more people find uh littering to be both offensive and, you know, it's something that. We're talking specifically about city parks, um. You know, we wanna keep those clean and we don't necessarily wanna keep our park personnel employed just picking up trash, I mean, it's, it's nice that they do that, but. You know, let's recover some of those costs, so I'm not sure whether that needs to be a class one infraction, um. But it, uh I appreciate it as a two, I, I can see moving it to one, supporting that.
Alright, thank you, Mister Serrano, so we can make that change, Mister First?
So yeah, it was the, if, if that's the consensus of council.
I would agree with that, anybody have any comments on that, Mister Alvarado?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I guess maybe I'm a little confused, I think this is the second, I think the last one had to do with parking violations uh previous weekend. And I get the sense, I got the sense that this was kind of a, a cleaning up of code, kind of a, you know, modernizing perhaps to um. Make sense with the uh RCW, uh RCWs or um so that, you know, we're in consensus, so that's kind of my understanding of it. And if we were to want to look further into details of this, we would kind of say, hey, well, can we look at this and that would be for further day, is, is that? Am I understanding that, like, that would be the right approach for this?
That, that's correct, but we got into a little bit of a situation where we do have to make some substantive decisions because in title one, we only have classes of. Of infractions, and if you'll notice everywhere we, we said, we're, we're striking through where it said section, for example, provisions of this section constitutes. An, an infraction, so that won't work because we have four levels. So code publishing picked up on that and, and was uh wants us to get consistent because uh that definitely leaves things open for interpretation and. That's what uh defense attorneys like to find, so.
On this specific one, we would need to have some form of substantive.
Yeah, that's why we're having to bring it to you, or otherwise, we could have done it as a Scrivener's error, but it, it actually is a substantive decision for a council to make for policy.
Making sure I understand that.
No, absolutely, thank you.
Mister Alvarado, Mister Maloney?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um I, I echo Mister Alvarado's statement there, I'd, I'd understood this to be simply a realignment due to language. I did not understand that we were changing or, or codifying what these, what these look like in terms of dollar signs for individual infractions. So um I, I certainly did not come into this with that understanding, um because I, I do have some questions, you know, given that of, of. How many of these are we writing, like, where are we seeing them, how, I, I would like to know a little, understand a little better of to when we're writing these infractions. Um and who is being served with them.
Oh, good point.
Because the, this, I, I don't understand how big the scope or how small the scope is of how often we're actually enforcing these um. Um this portion of our municipal code as it stands today, um cause uh, um you know, in alignment with um as Mister Serrano was saying. Some of these are relative, are, that's a large dollar sign for some of these infractions, um.
Well, problem, yeah, no, absolutely, the part, the problem with littering could be that uh that, that's gonna be a very broad um infraction, I mean. Wh- what's littering, you know, someone throwing down a wrapper from a candy wrapper, uh and then versus somebody, you know, dumping their trash. Uh it's gonna be pretty broad uh the way it's defined, so um it is gonna be tough, which is why, to, to be clear, that, that's why all these just referred to. As an, were referred to as an infraction, because um it is uh, it would, they, that leeway wanted to be there, but at this point, we really need to shore that up. And kind of decide what these are, but um if you'd like us to go ahead and um do a little more research on each, each of these provisions, so that you have a little more background. We can certainly do that.
My, what my interest in is, is very much on to when are we enforcing these as it currently stands, and we should have that information readily available, I imagine, is. What, what, what infractions we have issued over the last few years and what those trends look like, cause I think that very much plays into. Are we, do we have like a, a thousand instances of littering that we're now gonna be charging a hundred and forty five bucks a piece or two hundred and fifty dollars a piece or whatever the number is? And suddenly, this, there's a massive impact in our overall community and we're gonna be in the paper. And I would like to not be in the paper over um, um what we considered a administrative change to our municipal code.
Sure, yeah, we can get that information from the court.
I, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, perfect, thank you very much.
So, sounds like we wanna hold off on this for next week, okay?
Just hold off on it and get a little bit more information and then.
You bet.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I guess, uh yeah, uh uh if, if there's substantive kind of things for us to, to mull through, yeah, we definitely, I, I definitely would feel more comfortable. With more information and kind of uh versus if, oh yeah, we're cleaning up some Scrivener errors or uh or making it uh concise with, you know. Uh RCWs, uh uh that, you know, absolutely, you know, consent agenda for me, um but um, but if it's something where we're, we're actually making decisions of. Uh changes, then yeah, I, I very much echo that, just wanna make sure that I will speak about that too.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Good, good, good comments, good conversation, and God bless all of you who've just been hearing all this and. Dealing and going along with us on this meeting, um if there's no further comments, then we'll move right over uh to the miscellaneous council discussion. Anybody have anything they wanna share, Mister Zabel?
I, I did have a few things, just uh counsel, just a reminder of our uh community forum at G R Vida. Uh Rec Center this Wednesday at uh seven P M, and then we also have a groundbreaking for Fire Station eighty three. Uh council recently awarded the bid for that, so that'll be Friday the twenty eighth at three P M, and then a few things out of uh recreation, so we have our. It's hard to believe, we are having our first softball tournament at the complex this weekend. Yeah, I think it's gonna be twenty three degrees tomorrow morning, or morning after, but yeah, anyway, so uh we have tournaments for the next six weeks booked out. At the complex and then uh also I think worth noting, uh due to the construction of Stevens Middle School. Uh the city and the school just been working together and will be hosting a number of uh their baseball and softball teams at the Pasco softball complex as well. Uh over the season, so that's a good opportunity for us to work together with them, and then uh just to note, I don't have specific numbers for you tonight, but. Applications, uh boards and commissions are up, a lot of interest and uh we're getting, I think, closing those on the twenty eighth, so. That's exciting, and we'll get, be getting that information to council in the weeks to come, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Zabel, uh Mister Maloney?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that their um, the, the county commissioners are having a conversation tomorrow about um what their districting is looking like. They're in the process of, of looking at their maps and their red- redistricting, so people, if anybody has some interest in that, tomorrow might be a good day to, to attend. Um but it also comes in front of things like um Sheriff Raymond having a conversation with us last week about um, about where he's, he sees as a. As a need for some, for some conversation about how the, how the county, um how the county's decisions are influencing and affecting the city. Um if your voices are, if you're interested in having your voices heard, um the county commission has taken to um having some evening meetings. So now the public can come to, to meetings at seven o'clock, like for, for instance, tomorrow at seven, at seven P M. Not during the day when then most of the meetings are, are held, when, when a lot of us are at work, but in the evenings where, where a lot of us might be able to attend and, and um voices from the community can be heard. So um there's a number of things that um, if, if you're interested in talking to the county about joint development standards as a private citizen, this would be a wonderful opportunity. Just to come show up and, and, and have a little of that conversation with your county commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Maloney, and I would like to make one last comment to congratulate those uh Pasco teams from both high schools. Uh and the individuals who have made it to the next level at their state tournaments, I know the, the Tijuana Wrestling Team was first in state. Uh I know that the girls Tijuana basketball team is uh going on to state and then several other individuals from other schools that were uh state champions, so. Wanna congratulate uh those Pasco residents for their accomplishments, um keep up the good work. If there's nothing else, I think we went through our agenda items and uh, is there no need for?
No need this evening.
Thank you, Mister Zabel, so therefore uh go to number seven, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.